I'd like to call this April 12th, 2018, regular meeting of the Guyman City Council to order. I believe Angela Walker from the Church of the Nazarene is going to give her prayer. Is she here?
Yes.
Well, good timing.
Does anybody speak Spanish? Can somebody interpret this line of English? My Spanish is very poor. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this day you've given us, or for this place you've given us to live. And Father, thank you for these public servants that you've called to shepherd us, Lord, and to care for this city and to guide us. We pray, Father, as they discuss issues tonight that you would provide wisdom and insight, Lord, creative ideas where they're needed, Father, but most of all your guidance. Lord, we thank you, we praise you. We ask you, God, to bring rain to this part of the state, Lord, and help our city to prosper. We pray this in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two on the agenda is the roll call.
Peterson, Swager.
Here.
Alvedres.
Crone.
Here.
Livinggood.
Here.
Hoffman.
Here.
Mr. Petty.
Here.
Mr. Wagner.
Here.
Item number three is approval of the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
I've got a motion and a second.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Crone.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
We've got three ayes.
Item number four is public comments and announcements.
I'll be very quick. I hand you all the performance metrics for February. If y'all have any questions or anything, if you want to see different or anything on that, just let me know.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Item number five is the presentation of monthly activities and financial report by Artis Incubation.
Thank you. Just gonna give you a little poster here.
Busy day?
You know, we've got leadership. Thank you, folks, again, for your support. I jumped ahead in the last report because I was a week late, so, or two. So, I've already told you about our March spring break, the art camps that we've done for the kids. This is what we're doing right now. We had some people show up today for the TCEC Spotlight at lunch. No one signed up yet for the cooking classes, but I'm feeling like that should be good for us. It gets people into the gallery. And every time we have a cooking class, they will take a piece of art home, so there will be sales taxes collected, and we try to keep that in front of us at all times. There's a whole lot of new work that's been put into the gallery for the Leadership Oklahoma event that's happening tonight. I sure hope you council would help us, you know, be a nice face for Guyman. I know you try to do that, but we're having them over for, at 8:30 tonight, it's for dessert. And plenty for you guys. So, if you want to stop in there and just help us make them feel welcome, we like to have a nice face for Guyman, for that group from the day. And unless you have questions, I'm gonna keep it brief because I am setting up for that event. And we really appreciate your support. It means a lot.
Okay.
Thank you from Artis Incubation. Try to get the other board member to show up, so when you see him out on the street, say, "Where have you been?" Especially to Jim Quimby. All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Item number six is the presentation of monthly activities and financial report of Main Street Guyman.
During the month of March, our lunch mob was at Viartas, and our cash mob was at the Lumber Mart. I was gone for a week to the national conference. That's required that we send somebody to it, and it was at Kansas City this year, so I just drove. The Chamber took Leadership Guyman to the state Capitol, and we had five Transformers and one adult that went with them on the tour, so that worked really well. Again, this year Christine Scott is the one who takes them. And then during March, we were doing a lot of the planning for the community cleanup because that starts Saturday with the workday out at the Activity Center, the fairgrounds. And then the next Saturday is with the city crews out at the Activity Center. And then we have one more day because we have a lot of college groups, and we have a lot of high school groups, and, you know, proms and whatever getting away. So, we're gonna have quite a good number with the community cleanup this year. Our March vital volunteer is Kendra Butler. She's a, let's see, she's a sophomore volleyball player over at OPSU, and during spring break, she couldn't go home, so she helped at the office, and it was great. If you go by the office, notice we've got four trash receptacles. Those aren't trash cans because they say receptacles, okay? Just get that right. And those are, those were what we bought with the beef money that we had, and they're gonna go on these four corners here and get rid of the old ones. So, we've got also one new bench, and it's over by Beauty and the Beast. So, it's a memorial bench of her parents. I had told you last month that we had the Main Street training in August, but they've just switched us, so now we have it in November, which is really pretty good because if we're lucky, it'll snow, and then they'll have to stay an extra day. And if any of you would like to go to the Main Street banquet, holler. It's on May 8th. Sometimes you guys have something there, and somebody's already there, so we'd love to have you. We're not up for any awards this year, but it's still a great banquet to go to, in case he always sits with us. That's all. Marcia was talking about Leadership Oklahoma being here. I think this is the 20th year they've been here. There's usually 50 that come with it, and so we've hosted, what, I mean, Guyman has hosted at least 1,000 people over the years with that group, and I think that's pretty awesome, and it started at the city, so.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions? Oh, I do want to tell you, we had our auction last Saturday, a fundraiser, and it went really well. It was out at Draper's, and a lot of Hal Clark furniture was with it, and we made over $3,000.
Good.
We're happy.
Yeah.
Do you guys have any questions at all? No? Are you over the fluke?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. See ya.
Thank you very much.
Item number seven is the presentation and proclamation to declare the week of April 8th through the 14th as Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Whereas every day, millions of people depend on the skill, expertise, and commitment of public safety telecommunicators who provide poise under pressure, aid, and compassion in times of distress, and critical decision-making within seconds. And whereas the public safety telecommunicators take the strongest of criticism, yet they remain calm and caring; and whereas the public safety telecommunicators care not just for one another, but will go the extra mile for a complete stranger in need of help; and whereas the public safety telecommunicators fight crime from behind computers, phones, and sometimes with a pen and a paper, however, sometimes it is not seen; and whereas America's public safety telecommunicator professionals make the difference between life and death, and in many instances without due recognition of their services. Now therefore, I, Larry Swager, Vice Mayor of Guyman, Oklahoma, and the City Council do hereby proclaim the week of April 8th through the 14th, 2018, to be Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Do we have anybody here present?
I didn't see you all, but I'm in worship. I know she was. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
I'd like to introduce the ones that were able to make it. First of all, Lieutenant Arnold, standing next to Keith Bass, who's waiting on train today. We have Kimberly Enen, she is our supervisor in our communications unit. Naomi Sandoval and Laura Taylor. The ones that were unable to make it will be Rebecca Fernandez, Sam Moore, and Jesse Butler.
Thank you very much. Item number eight.
Larry, since we're missing two council members, I think we should probably script that proclamation, number eight.
Okay. We'll just table item number eight. Item number nine is discussion and possible action on approval of ordinance number 829 and ordinance amending zoning ordinances and zoning map for the city of Guyman, Oklahoma of the code of ordinance with the city of Guyman providing for severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, and declaring an emergency. You have the staff report. I believe you gave us a map. Do we have any questions? Is anybody here on, would you like to come forward and discuss?
Okay, so basically, right now it's on C2, and we have a 50-foot setback, so it doesn't allow us to use half of our property. So, that's why we wanted to rezone it to C3, to have a better opportunity to build something, I guess a little better.
Okay. Have you got anything in mind as far as what you'd like to build?
Well, we, do you guys not have the sheet? We have a small blueprint.
I do not have one with me, no.
We have this one.
We've just got...
Just a lot survey.
It's just a lot survey is all we've got.
No, there's a blueprint drawn on there.
Okay, you're talking about, oh, car wash?
Yes.
So, right now, you've got, it looks like three bays would be, would not, you wouldn't be able to build three bays?
Three manual bays and one automatic bay.
This went before the planning and zoning, and they denied it, is that correct?
What they were saying was that they really believed that it was spot zoning. They believed it was spot zoning.
I understand we had, was it, three individuals that protested?
There was two here at that meeting of that night that came and talked.
We got three letters.
There was three letters.
You gentlemen have any questions you would like to ask? My main concern is, would be, the three that did write the letters, one was worried about, you know, that area has a tendency to flood, and they were worried with the car wash. Another one was concerned about the noise, extra noise at night, that, you know, that he'd have put up with. Mr. Harris, seems to me we did have some sewer problems in that area real bad a year or so ago. Do you remember that, or have we got that corrected, or?
I think the comments were about Kentucky Fried Chicken, which is across the street.
Right.
If it's run, if it's run properly, it shouldn't be any problems as far as adding sewer, as far as capacity, but I'm not, I'm not sure of any particulars on that, on that property.
Quite frankly, I don't, I'm really not in favor of overriding the planning and zoning. I've always felt like we need to go with our boards when we, that's what we use them I think I would make a motion to deny ordinance number 829.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second.
Crone.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
We've got three ayes to deny.
Item number 10 is discussion and possible action on approval of ordinance number 831 and ordinance adopting the official zoning map for the city of Guyman of the code of ordinance with the city of Guyman providing for severability.
I'll give you a little background. I think y'all have probably know quite a bit. About 20 years ago was the last time the city adopted a true zoning map, that everything was up to date. Since that point, it really wasn't kept up to date on a map form. Each one of the ordinances, anytime there's a zoning change, just like tonight, planning and zoning approves, and then it comes to council, and council takes action on that, and there are records of each one of those zoning changes. What we wanted to do is get a good map because there were a lot of maps floating around that people had. I know Johnny Curtis' one said, "I've got a map right here," but it was 20 years old. And so, what we did, and it was, I bet it was at least three-month project, is we went back with staff and reviewed all of the ordinances from the time of the last approval, and looked at each one of those, the planning and zoning and city ordinances, to confirm and have documentation of the changes that were made. We took those changes, transferred them to the last official adopted map, made those changes on here. It was taken planning and zoning. I know David went out with, Johnny had quite a few concerns about different things, and spent about a day with him driving around, around town, looking at property. As a Realtor, he's got a lot of background, and we looked at different properties, and then we confirmed and researched to see that everything was correct. So, the map that we have now on GIS will have a layer, and then there is a sub-layer of that that tells, as each one of these tracks. So, tonight, it was denied, there's no change in the map. Had you approved it to C3, then we would make a change on that map, but there would be an ordinance tied to the map to show why the change was. You don't have to come back and adopt the map all of the time. This is kind of a cleanup process where we have all the backup, been reviewed by several different people. And so, that's what this is, you'd have an official map. Up until this point, we don't have a zoning map on our website because we don't have a map that we think is good.
Okay.
The previous one, there's been too many changes. So, now, once we have this, we can put it on the website, so anybody coming to town looking to see where zoning is on property, we would have that. And then this map, as changes are made, would be updated, and we would have it on our GIS system, and we would update that map and load it, so we would have a current, up-to-date map. As with anything, if we find something on the map that's not correct, and something comes up that there's an ordinance, then we would have the documentation before any change was made. So, that's just what this is, getting y'all to adopt a map, and this is a good starting point. Now we're confident in it and can put it out to the public.
Okay, thank you. Now, we can make a motion for the ordinance. We cannot make a motion to declare it an emergency because there has to be four of us here for that, but we can pass the ordinance.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion, approval of ordinance number 831, ordinance adopting the official zoning map for the city of Guyman of the code of ordinances of the city of Guyman providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second?
Livinggood.
Aye.
Crone.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
We have three ayes.
Item number 11 is the discussion and possible action on resolution number 1805, a resolution, directing filing, and notification of the publication of the 2018 supplement to the Guyman City Code.
This is just, we haven't updated with Munich Code in a year and a half, somewhere in there, and it's just time. We need to update everything we've done, so it's all-inclusive.
Any questions?
Nope.
Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number 18-05, a resolution directing filing and notification of the publication of the 2018 supplement to the city, to the Guyman City Code.
Do I have a second? Yeah, I'll go ahead and second it. I'm, yeah, I'll second it. I got a motion and a second.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Crone.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
We've got three ayes.
Item number 12 is the discussion and possible action on resolution number 18-06, a resolution increasing ambulance rate from 900 to 1,200 a run.
Council, this is, we talked about this last year. We updated from 575 to 900. We hadn't updated it since '95, when the fire department took over the ambulance service. That took us to 900, which was still on the low end of everything. The state average is 1,500, so this just kind of bumps it up a little bit more. And there is a fine line between what you can charge and what you're gonna get paid, and what your percentages are gonna be on collection rates. We looked today, we're still at about 79, 80% collection rates, which is among one of the best in the state, so I think we'd be all right to bump it up the extra 300. Whatever you think.
Is this average based on the entire state, or is this average based on cities about our size?
The ones that we mainly looked at were cities our size. The chart was everybody, but the cities I looked at were like Perry, Oklahoma, and we're kind of unique also because we're fire-based EMS, we're run by city government. A lot of the ones out there are privatized, so their main goal is to make money. Ours isn't, but it's also to help supplement what it's gonna cost to run an ambulance. It gets expensive every year. The cardiac monitors that we're trying to look at replacing, we quoted about $50,000 apiece. So, nothing in healthcare is cheap. I wish there was something that could be done, but there's not. It's expensive to run an ambulance.
Does Medicare cover, what does it cover on an ambulance run?
So, Medicare and Medicaid, and I'm gonna tell you kind of the basics of what I know. It's way over my head. Since we are a Medicare/Medicaid provider, we take what they accept, or we take what they give us, is what I've been told. So, if they, Medicaid especially, they have a set rate, and whatever they say is the rate, that's what we get. Last I heard, it was like $147 to take a patient to Amarillo, and that doesn't pay fuel to go to Amarillo, but that's a cost of doing business, so. We're not privatized. We can't turn people down for insurance, no insurance, or any of that, so.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution 18-06, a resolution increasing ambulance rates from 900 to 1,200 a run.
I'll second it.
I got a motion and a second.
Crone.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
We've got three ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 13 is consider, considering take action to issue a notice of annexation of 16.969 acre tract adjacent to the Guyman City Limits on Highway US 412 and Hurlem Road on May 10th, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. And the notice of annexation. This is property...
This is property for the soccer complex across the street on, what is that? I can't remember the highway, but this is just notification of annexing. The actual annexing would be April 12th meeting.
Do we have any questions? I'll make a motion. We issue notice of annexation of the 16.9690 acre tract adjacent to Guyman City Limits on US Highway 412 and Hurlem Road, May 10th, 2018, at 6:00 p.m.
Second.
Got a motion and a second?
Crone.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
We've got three ayes.
Item number 14 is discussion on the OHP lease options. We have the staff report.
So, a lot of you know we're trying to do some sort of centralized dispatch, trying somehow, some way, to get us all in one building to where the right hand knows what the left hand is doing. And so, I've been talking to OHP, trying to figure out how we can get into this building. Most of you know that OHP dispatch isn't dispatched here anymore, so they have a nice dispatch center. Now, it's out of Enid, so they've moved all their stuff out of dispatch, they don't go there anymore. So, talking to the troopers that are in and out of the station, they like the idea of having somebody there full-time. So, we've reached out to the attorneys. The attorneys and Mr. Petty, it's kind of a mess from what I can tell. There's, the deeds haven't been filed, stuff hasn't been done, which, to this point, works out to our advantage. So, if everything comes out, and I don't have a lot of numbers, I just want everybody to be on the same page of what's trying to happen behind the scenes. So, we're trying very hard to do something with the OHP building because it's already a hardened structure, it's already got a generator, it's already ADA compliant, it's a good building for us, and they don't use it anymore. They're very rarely in it. So, talking to the attorneys, they would like a lease from the city or a deed from the city at some point. That way, they know that they're secure in their building. And their process to me was, if we're gonna put a wall up, because I, if we are doing a dispatch, I want it to be walled off to where they can't go anywhere, you know, it's secured for them and it's secured for OHP. Their suggestion was, we go ahead and build the wall and stuff while the city still is in charge of it, so we don't have to jump through the hoops through the state. So, and that's kind of where we're at now, and at some point, OHP is gonna look for a lease from the city or a deed from the city, one way or the other, and I've talked to Mr. Petty a lot about it, and, you know, we can add into the lease that they have to let our centralized dispatch stay there until they're ready to vacate the building, and once they vacate it, I think it would just come back to the city anyway, so. Do you have any questions? And this is, centralized dispatch has been talked for 20 years. I mean, I've been here 17, it's always talked about, and then it kind of gets shuffled behind, and then we talk about it, and we shuffle it behind, and we talk about it, and we shuffle it behind, and it just seems to be a huge liability to me for the things that we answer. The, well, they left, but the girls are trained to do a job, and part of the time, that's dumped on the firefighters, and we don't necessarily know how to deal with some of those calls that come in, and it all gets taken care of up to this point, but I see it as a liability for the city and for the firefighters, so. You have any questions?
I'd like to see it located in one place for everybody, too.
And it just, it just makes sense. We're not reinventing the wheel. I mean, Muskogee County has done it, they've got 150,000 people, Woodward's done it, Lawton's done it, there's lots of places that have done it, and eventually, the state would even like us to try to bring on Beaver County and Simiron County because they have red counties and green counties. Green means they're 911, red means they can't take 911 calls, and Simiron County and Beaver County can't. So, there may be some grant funding in the future, and they're gonna have to pay into the system to make it work anyway, so Beaver County right now has two dispatchers, so they're working 12-hour shifts, seven days a week. How long would you last? I wouldn't stay there.
As you said...
A, a, as you said, we've heard about central dispatch for years, and, and it just keeps getting kicked back. Are you feeling more optimistic that if we do this, it can happen, or?
I go through phases where I'm super optimistic, and then I get kind of put back down. And the biggest thing is I, I'm a small piece to this puzzle. I'm, I'm, you know, Chief Bab has the dispatchers, the sheriff has the dispatcher. So you have to get all these pieces kind of working and fitting together. And in the past, it was, we couldn't come up with the one point seven million dollars to build a dispatch center. To build what, what you need and what's required, it can't be done. I mean, there's no way we can afford one point seven, the county can't, the city can't. Um, so, other, with this being an option, I feel a lot more optimistic about maybe we can push it forward and make things happen. And there's going to be cost savings, we have to buy new nine-one-one equipment, ours is past due. I mean, we're piecing it together daily, um, trying to make it last. So we're, we're to the point where we have bid specs back in, and, you know, it, it's a pretty good savings, just to go with one building as opposed to two anyways. And the way the funds are right now, the city gets money, the county gets money, and then it all gets dumped back into the city's nine-one-one fund. And then we pay out, um, to pay for that equipment. And if, I would have never known what it costs to have nine-one-one equipment, but that stuff is not cheap. I think the bid right now is three hundred thousand, and that's only a, a small portion of answering phone calls, so. And there is going to be a lot more training involved. So, I think in the future, the dispatchers will be even a, a level higher, and I think that's a reason we need to all be together. That way, it's one playing field, the sheriff knows what the PD's doing, the PD knows what the fire's doing, fire knows what everybody's doing. That way we're, everybody can communicate. And right now, um, if, if a phone call is answered, there's a chance that they call from the city, but it goes to the county. The county answers, if they listen to your story, then it goes to the city, the city listens, and then they dispatch. And it's just critical time that could be saved if we were sitting right across from each other, in my opinion.
I'd like to see it move forward.
Th, th, this is listed as discussion, option, uh, or discussion, so, uh, what, what do you need from us, uh, as far as, what can we do?
You know, I think we're just, I, I just wanted everybody to be on the same page. Hey, I, I don't want anybody to feel like I'm talking to O H P, and you guys aren't in the loop. And, uh, O H P was, you know, they're also concerned for, for their sake, you know? They've, they've got a big building over there, and that they thought was theirs, and now there's some confusion. And so, they want everything cleaned up on their end, so this is just kind of that discussion to say, hey, this is what we're pursuing. And if y'all are all right with it, I'll pursue it harder. And, um, we're talking to Chief Bab and the sheriff, and everybody's on the same page. And the one thing we're trying to come up with now is a, um, inter-local agreement. Right now, we have one, but it's not, I mean, it was done, I don't know, twenty-five years ago, it, it's old. So, the other communities are also going to have to pay into the system, and that's where we might get a little bit of kickback. But, um, it, it has to be done, in, in my opinion, again. You know, twenty thousand dollars for a dispatch center is pretty cheap, if you're a Goodwell, or a Hooker, or Texoma, that's, they can't build one for one point seven either, so. So this, just kind of getting everybody on, talking and on the same page, so we all know what's going on, so.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah. So, if they're all all right, I'll keep pursuing it, and I'll tell O H P that you're not going to kick them out, and they'll be happy for a little bit, so.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
No concerns?
Thank you very much. Item number fifteen is new business, any new business? Will stand adjourned as Guyman City Council and re, reconvene as a Guyman Utility Authority. And I just lost my page. Item number one we've done, item number two we've done. Item number three is discussion and possible action on approval of change order number three to D B and E. For an increase of seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and an additional thirty days on the water well number twenty-three R project.
Well, I'm sorry I wasn't at the last council meeting, my kids are a long ways away. Take, I drove seventeen hundred miles to see two kids and some families, so.
Good for you.
Anyway, um. A little bit of information on this, the, the cost itself, which was some increases in some buried pipe that we didn't know what size it was. When the plans were developed, it was assumed it was six inch, because it came out of the ground, and where they tied on it was an eight inch. And so the fittings to tie in is where, uh, some of the money is on that as well. The, it talks about the difference in the size of the horsepower of the pump. We, we bid the job based on estimates by hydrologist on how much water it would produce at the time. Knowing that part of the project was the well pumping, the actual test phase that I've reported on a little bit. And then once they established how much water the thing would produce, and got the recommendations from hydrologists, then we chose the, the size of the pump that was on there. So there's actually a little bit of a, a decrease on the cost of the pump, even for a smaller, I mean, there's a decrease in the size, but the price went up. Because things just seem to keep going up, uh, nothing seems to come down. So it's a small amount on that as, as well. I think in your packet is a request on the time that they have requested. I think they had supplied a little bit of information on that. Part of it, um, they, they moved over to drill a well, ended up losing a bunch of stem, the, the thing collapsed. I think part of that's the top end of the aquifer is dry, and the gravel kind of caved in and locked their bits down. So we moved over to another spot. We didn't lose any money on that, it did take them a little bit more time. Uh, we had our final inspection on that well Tuesday, um, we've got a few more things in the works. Uh, but it's, it's up in production right now, everything's going, so, uh, we'd recommend approval of the change order. And I'm here if you have any questions.
Okay. Any questions? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion of approval of the change order number three to D B and E. For an increase of seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and an additional thirty days on the water well number twenty-three R project.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second?
Livinggood?
Aye.
Crown?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
We've got three ayes.
Thank you. Item number four is discussion and possible action on approval of pay request number two. In the amount of thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty cents. To Slattery Construction for the lift station and force main to serve southeast Guyman project.
So this is the project I've been reporting on, you'll see another one tomorrow, some pictures of the force main. It's out by the cemetery along Hurlem, that's for future development out there, and that's, that's what this project is. Uh, we've still got a lot to go before we get it built, but everything so far has gone well.
Okay, good. Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve pay request number two in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty cents. To Slattery Construction for the lift station and force main to serve southeast Guyman project.
Second.
Got a motion and a second?
Crown?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
We've got three ayes.
Item number five is new business. Do we have any, anybody have any new business? Item number six is a report from the city manager and council members.
I've got a few things. Tomorrow, there is a reception here at city hall, uh, from three to five. Lieutenant Jason Bond has decided to retire after twenty years. He started October thirteenth, nineteen ninety-seven, and I just wanted to say thank you and what an accomplishment for serving the city of Guyman. Also, our, uh, our spring cleanup, again, is next Saturday. So, anybody, we'll have crews on at the activity center and at the transfer station for any material. If anybody wants to get ahead and start cleaning up properties. And attached with y'all's, uh, notes, I gave y'all a letter that I will be sending to the FAA over the five-year, five-year capital improvement plan. And that's just notifying them that we intend to continue with the changes over the five-year period. Other than that, that's all I got.
Anybody else?
It's not a report from me, but, uh, Mr. Harris, I'd like to put you on the spot if I could, and I apologize. I get a lot of questions about how we stand water-wise, we're in a drought and all of that, and everybody's worried about water rationing. Would you like to address that, or can you address it? I don't mean to put you on the spot that way, but.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I did, thank you. The city of Guyman does have a water conservation drought contingency plan, uh, I haven't looked at that since last summer. There are certain triggers in that, based on capacities, how much water we have in our tanks, storage. And at certain conditions, we could institute rationing. At, at this point, we're, we're not at that point. I'm not sure if it's on our website or not, but we, we've been doing a little bit of public information about being conservative on water. And, and your report tomorrow, the timing is good, you'll have a bunch of reading I gave you. Gee, I'm going to be sorry you asked this question. But I have information about what our capacities are, based on state calculations, how the new well will affect us, and some of our peak demands over some, some previous years. Some of those peak demands will scare you, if they don't scare you, they should scare you. We, because we hit a little over eight million, almost eight point one million, uh, in twenty-eleven, and that's more than the current capacity we have until we put this last well on. And that's with running twenty-four hours a day, all wells, no, no stops, everything works fine. We design for peak days, peak days are a very small percentage of the actual year. Uh, we're running about four million gallons a day, uh, through the winter, uh, four and a half, five. Uh, so we have plenty of capacity in winter time. Uh, at this point, we're not anywhere close to having any kind of triggers, but there is a plan specifically adopted, I think. That is submitted with the state, and estimate their criteria as far as when we would institute, uh, any rationing. At this point, it's not even on our radar. People are just starting to water a little bit, uh, they are watering the pavement, which is never beneficial. Uh, makes money, but it hurts the pavement, uh, we're seeing a little of that. Until we get some rain to really perk the grass up, uh, and some warmer temperatures, you know, we're ninety-two, and then we were snowing a few days earlier. Grass really hadn't come out, once it gets out, people will start watering. Uh, right now, it doesn't do a whole lot of good, but as soon as that ground temperature comes up, it'll get green in a hurry. Uh, but we'll continue to monitor those levels as well. Um, and I can pull that plan and, and send it to y'all, if y'all'd like to look at it, just.
No, I was, I was just curious, uh, uh, are, you know, you reported in one of your reports to us that, uh, people were still watering the street and the sidewalks. Uh, are we, are we kind of watching that at all, and maybe knocking on doors or anything, or?
I don't know how much of that has happened to this point, uh, if we see a leak, if we see a broken sprinkler head, or if we see something that's a malfunction, we'll tell them. Uh, if somebody has a high water bill, and they question us about a reread, and we go out there and see that, well, you've got two broken sprinkler heads, and we can see the water trail down, down the road, and we'll, we'll look at that. We haven't really started policing that at this point.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Anything else? Will stand adjourned, thank you for coming.